We'll get started in a few minutes. Councilman Monroe is on her way and the roads are tough right now, so we'll give her a few moments. We're gonna get started in two minutes. Hopefully she'll be here, if not, we'll get right going. Okay, I'm gonna call the Budget, Finance, and Governments Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
And let the record show, we're joined by Councilmember Michael Patterson. Thank you for joining us. We are going to jump right into the legislative business, so there's a couple of different subjects that I do wanna have some more detailed conversation on as we move forward here. But we'll start with introductory number 448, which is authorizing an ammendatory agreement related to legal services for the Our Future Fund Children Savings Account Program. Let me start out with a couple of questions myself, and I'll turn over to my council colleagues. First of all, to our Corporation Council, I'm just curious, and this will, I'll echo this question at a different introductory in this packet as well, but just the thinking around the need to have outside council supporting this work?
Sure, I can tell you briefly and we can follow up in writing if need be, but essentially this is about structuring a financial arrangement, which is just simply outside of the general practice areas of the Law Department, so we're looking for folks who have a specialty in this area.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I don't have any follow-up questions around that. I do just wanna ask, I guess this question is for the Deputy Mayor, or I don't know, oh, I see Angela back there, about where we are in terms of timeframe for the launch of the program?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so hopefully the first quarter of 2026.
Hopefully the first quarter of 2026. And the last that we had discussed in these chambers was, we initially were gonna be working specifically with the City School District, and then there was a conversation, we were gonna be opening it up to some of the charter schools as well. Where are we now in terms of the actual, if first quarter 2026 works out, and let's hope it does, what does the rollout look like?
Yep, so we are looking at opening that eligibility for both district and charter school kindergartners.
I'm sorry Angela, I'm having, I am actually having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
Okay, is this, there we go.
That's better.
So the eligibility will be open to both charter schools' kindergartners and city school district.
And is it gonna be an opt-in situation or an opt-out situation?
We're going to do a hybrid approach, based on the data sharing we're able to get.
Based on, based on what the school is willing to provide from a data perspective?
Correct.
Makes sense. Any other questions from council members? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 49, authorizing an ammendatory agreement related to the development of an arts and culture plan for the city and county. Any questions, comments, or concerns about this? If not, I'll take a motion?
Move it.
Moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 450. Authorizing a grant agreement and amending the 25-26 budget relating to the development of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This is one of the items I mentioned before, I just wanna have a little bit of a further conversation in the legislative review. I had a good conversation with our Director of Planning, Kevin Kelly, about the nature of what we're being asked to do here and how it fits into the overall project in front of us. So Kevin, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about who the specific partner is, the Parks and Trails New York, and what their role in this project may be?
Sure, Parks and Trails New York is a nonprofit organization based out of Albany that does advocacy work statewide for enhancing parks and trails throughout local communities. And so we're essentially using them as sort of a fiduciary or pass-through for this grant that's actually originating from the ESL Foundation. So, because they can't grant that directly to the city, so we're using Parks and Trails New York for that pass-through. So they can have some involvement, you know, perhaps on the steering committee of this project, but it wouldn't necessarily be deep involvement, their primary role is that pass-through function.
Great, and just to bring my colleagues up to speed, so this is $168,000 coming from the ESL Foundation, which is a wonderful contribution to a very important planning project. What is the total cost of the entire planning project?
It will be in the neighborhood of $500,000 that we have assembled to hire a consultant team to help us develop the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
And so the rest of the funding is already reserved and ready to go in the city's coffers?
Yes, we have CDBG funds and we have cash capital funds.
So just, if you would provide just some clarity, once this is passed and this $168 is part of the overall budget of the project, what does the time line look like to select a consultant and to actually hopefully finish a plan?
We intend to release an RFP sometime in the next month, or maybe in early January, and you know, the process takes a few months, and then get a consultant onboard and the plan up and running in spring/summer timeframe, and then it's approximately a two-year process to develop the master plan.
And I can't, I can't overstate how important this planning process is. In my tenure on council, there certainly hasn't been anything this comprehensive when it comes to a recreation, not facilities. This is not a planning for indoor spaces, it's for outdoor spaces, that's attached to the rec centers, parks, but even some of the little standalone facilities that the city has. I mentioned earlier in conversation, there's a, right off of Grape Street, there's a single standalone basketball court that I played at for years. It's not attached to a park, it's by itself, but the city actually owns that. This will actually now be included in the planning process for how we incorporate, I presume things as simple as signage, but also how we make sure that things are on the right kind of schedule for upkeep and everything of that nature. So this is a great, a great plan for us to have. It's gonna take about two years for it to be fully done, but at least now we'll have all the money, and I wanna encourage folks to ask questions they have about the planning. So I'll start with Vice President Harris.
Thank you. And I did see that you mentioned that this does not include indoor facilities, but there's one facility that's not, I'm not really sure if it, if it's categorized as indoor/outdoor, but like Genesee Valley Park Pool, is there pools that's included into this plan?
Yeah, those facilities would be looked at as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
How does this tie in with the work that's already been done during the public outreach and the first workups of what people are expecting in some of the parks, like around Edgerton and LaGrange and those types of facilities?
Yeah, so there are a couple of specific parks that have master plan processes happening right now, being led by Drys. And this is gonna be a little bit of a higher level view, and it'd be more of a citywide system level view of taking an inventory of all of our facilities and all of our assets, understanding what the community desires to improve that network and those facilities, and how we can prioritize our investments over time in those facilities. If you imagine that that LaGrange project was not happening right now, just as an example, and then we did this citywide Parks and Rec Master Plan, that would be an example recommendation that would come out of this plan to say, go deeper into LaGrange, do a more detailed master plan for that park. So that's how that would relate to a more specific park plan. So there might be additional parks that we recommend out of this plan that need a deeper dive, like we're doing right now with LaGrange.
So was it in doing that first set of planning that it was determined that there needed to be kind of a master plan for the master plan that would include the parks' master plan?
Really, the impetus for this came out of the Rochester 2034 Comprehensive Plan, where it was identified that we need to do an update to our citywide Parks and Rec Master Plan, because it hasn't been done since 2003, we don't have an up-to-date, detailed inventory of our facilities and assets and the needs of each of those. So along the way, you know, folks like Sarah and others and Drys identified that there are great needs at LaGrange and other parks, and so we are not waiting for this plan to be done to do that important work. But once this citywide plan is done, we will have stronger, more detailed guidance so that our future investments are a little bit more proactive and intentional, and a little bit less on the reactionary side.
And again, you were saying that this is all for outside, as opposed to any kind of inventory of the interior?
Correct, yeah, and you know, that line is perhaps a little bit blurry in that, you know, we might get into, you know, the programming that's offered at our rec centers, which, you know, sometimes is inside, sometimes is outside, so that's sort of a TBD kind of item. But we're not looking necessarily at a detailed inventory of the conditions of rec center buildings necessarily.
So this also then would address some of the bike trails and making connections all the way down the Genesee from Charlotte?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hopefully down to downtown and beyond?
Correct, yeah, and we're engaged in a study right now in city planning to complete the Riverway Trail from downtown to Lake Ontario. But this larger citywide Parks and Rec Master Plan will have a trails component to build on the opportunities identified in the Rochester 2034 Comprehensive Plan. There's lots of different trail possibilities identified in that plan.
Thank you.
Additional, additional questions? Before I take a motion, Kevin and Sarah, I'd just like to ask that there please be some detailed amount of council involvement in the lengthy process. I know each of us has some insight into our facilities and our recreation amenities that we hear about from our constituents, both as assets and opportunities. And it'd just be great to make sure that once the process gets moving, once a consultant is chosen, that baked into that, there's some time for council to debrief with them a little bit.
Absolutely, thanks.
I'll take a motion, please?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 451, authorizing an ammendatory agreement to implement a Neighbors in Action Grant Program. I know we'll be having a work session on this very subject in about an hour or so. But does anyone have any questions right now they'd like to ask the administration?
Save it for the work session.
Okay, then I'll take a motion. It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 452, Designating an Updated Official Flag for the City of Rochester. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Questions.
Council President Melendez.
So, yes, thank you for the work on this so far. I have some preliminary questions. From the transmittal, I agree with the statement that the current official flag no longer reflects the branding or shared symbolism of the city and the broader community. And certainly the mark that we are, our beloved mark, our flower, is something that the city resonates with. When was the last time the flag was updated, if ever?
1910, it was introduced.
1910 introduced.
And in 1934, it was accepted by council.
Thank you. And in terms of the redesign, what level of community engagement was involved, if any?
We basically took the flag that everyone understands to be the city flag, the one that's behind you right now, in fact, and we just took the lettering off as best practice in flag design. And so we left it to be the flag that the community at large understands it to be.
Understood. And in terms of the, I think the local community definitely would know the logo, know the city, know the flag. But I don't know that outsiders would, and I think the lettering on the flag helps with that. But that's an opinion. But why wasn't the Rochester City Council involved in the, either the unveiling or even in the know that this was in the works?
It was not intentionally, we didn't intentionally leave you out, but obviously we didn't intentionally engage you, so you know, I can apologize for that.
Okay, and I think I'd like to ask the chair if we can hold this item for now.
Councilmember Martin had a question?
I think the president covered all mine, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe, followed by Councilmember Patterson.
I too request that it be held, a particular question to me too is not having the wording on it as we see on the current flags.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah, I'm comfortable withholding it, but I would also hope that we would be considering an amendment to put the letter, put the wording around. I mean, otherwise, I don't know what this flag is telling me. At least with the old flag, it says Rochester. I didn't know it was an old flag until you showed it to me, but at least it had Rochester on it. The new flag, though, as a lifelong Rochesterian resident, I look at it, yeah, I know what it is, but how does anybody else? I think that flag that is behind Council President is the flag. And I think that's what we should be looking at adopting. Somebody wanna unfurl that thing a little bit so the rest of the community can see it? You know, I mean, I think that's it, right there. And that is the amendment that I'd like to propose that we consider in the future.
Well, I will, I will hold the item, I'm not gonna entertain amendments at the moment, but I will hold it. And I suppose this is, none of us are designers up here, but we're all people with lots of opinions. So that's probably the reason to engage us in advance. I'm curious, Director Pierce, since you mentioned that best practice is to take the lettering off, what is, what's the logic behind that?
If that flag is flying in the opposite direction, you can't read it. And so it's just a matter of, if you Google any flag design, they'll just say that lettering, also interesting enough, coats of arms are also not preferred. So I think it's a matter of conversation, I think that needs to happen between now and council meeting, and I'm definitely interested and open to engaging council members further in the conversation.
Sounds good. We'll hold this item, so, pardon, oh, Councilmember Martin.
In the transmittal, you mention public engagement and hearing feedback from the community around this. Do you have any data to support what community input looked like, what intentional efforts went into no lettering versus lettering? Could you share that, please?
I don't know that I said anywhere in here that we got community input, beyond the community input we gathered from online forums, input that we receive from the community, like I've got a presentation in front of me, that sort of thing. But I don't have any, we haven't do engagement.
Right, can you share that, because I'm trying to understand the specific efforts for community inputs and...
Sure, you bet.
Thank you.
Vice President Harris.
Thank you. Is there any addition, Ms. Nishner, is there any additional changes to our civic identity marking the 50th anniversary that's upcoming that we should be aware of?
There are no changes to the city mark.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are gonna hold introductory number 452, and I'm gonna move us on to introductory number 453, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion?
Move it.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 454, authorizing an agreement with Lifetime Benefit Solutions Incorporated related to flexible benefit plans administration. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, is there, is there a change to the amount workers receive coming next year? Right now, workers get about $1,000 each year for health spending, is that going to change in the next year?
We'll respond to that in writing.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this matter? If not, I'll take a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 455, amending the 25-26 budget related to the Rochester Area Community Foundation Grant. I am gonna disclose that I am the council liaison of the Rochester Public Library Board. I am only required to disclose, and I may participate in the discussion and the vote. This item is really about funding or raising a reader program, which I know this council has spent a lot of time and effort investing in, so I'd love to offer Director Klassper a chance just to talk about what specifically is being done here.
So these funds are intended to go towards our raising a reader program and expanding that so that we can bring those services that are already established and bring those directly into in-home licensed daycare and childcare programs, which is a growing area in childcare in our area. That is, those are where a lot of the families that we want to reach have a presence, and it's just a very good way, we think, to reach a lot more kids and families with these services for them. And so this will allow us to expand our capacity to be able to reach out directly to where these families are and, and bring the Raising a Reader Program to them, right in that, right in that space.
Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. Communications Director Pierce, is there a plan to work with the library to get this information out about the expanded Raising Reader Program to this population?
Yeah, we actually have a beet lead that works closely with the library and helps support all their efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Do you, first of all, this is a great program, I appreciate all you all do at the library. Do you have a timeline for when the program will roll out, or specific targeted neighborhoods you're looking to start with?
We do have a tentative timeline, I would have to get that from the folks that are running the program, but I believe it would be starting pretty much immediately after we get the approval to amend the budget for this.
Thank you.
Vice President Harris.
Thank you. Again, I agree that this is a great program. Will this, the will of participation be based on referral, or will you solicit participation throughout the neighborhood by...
My understanding is that we will go out and we will be soliciting participation from a number of different sources throughout the different neighborhoods in the city.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'll take a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 456, a resolution approving an appointment to the Downtown enhancement district advisory council. I'll just make one comment, this is actually to President Melendez. I think it'd be great for council, I know you serve on the convention center board, am I correct about that?
Yes, sir.
It'd be great to have an opportunity to meet the great Jim Brown's successor, who is who we are currently. We're about to appoint to the Downtown Enhancement District Advisory Council, but very glad to have someone new onboard and look forward to meeting them in the near future. So hopefully you can arrange that for all of council.
We will work on that, thank you.
Any questions on 456? If not, I'll take a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 457, authorizing an ammendatory agreement related to representation in certain employment matters. I'd like to make a motion to amend introductory number 457 to update the legislation to include the term. The amended legislation has been submitted by the administration to this body, and a hard copy of the amendment has been laid on each member's desk, it is this salmon-colored sheet. May I have a motion to amend?
Move it.
Move it.
May I have a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
It's been seconded. Let's vote on amending the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Wonderful. So, now, let's talk about the motion as amended. I have a similar question to Corporation Council. It does seem as though we are spending more and more money on outside council for a variety of sources, for a variety of reasons, I should say. So, can you talk about this particular introductory before us?
Sure. So, we were before you in October as well on this contract, and we had a PNC meeting.
Corporation Council, could you get closer? We can't hear.
Yep. Better. So, we had a PNC in October about this, this contract, some of this work. And I flagged for you at that time too, that we're going to be coming back in December for a little more funding. This is for two things. One is a conflict issue. There's a pending labor and employment litigation that my office is conflicted on, and so, we have outside council handling that. That is the bulk of this increase. That litigation has turned out to be more expensive than we anticipated. The other portion of this, about $7,000 worth, is for work doing internal investigations for HR because they've had some staffing issues, and this firm is qualified to take on that work. So, they've taken some of that over too.
Just a question about the second part. And I recognize there's, you know, we have to have attorneys working on matters for attorneys when they're conflicted, they're conflicted. But in terms of the internal HR matters, where does OPI find all of this? Is that not in some regard, the purpose of having a separate OPI department to help out with some of these kinds of investigations?
This sort of investigation generally wouldn't fall under OPI's jurisdiction.
For what, for what, for what specific reason?
OPI is specifically charged with looking at issues of waste, fraud, employee theft of time and resources. These sorts of issues deal with personnel matters, harassment, protected class issues, which require a different sort of skill sets.
Okay. Any further questions by council? Councilmember Martin.
Can you provide in writing, and obviously, this will be confidential, just a summary of the specific issues they're looking into on behalf of HR? And also, an update about the case we discussed.
Can do.
Okay. Let's vote on introductory number 457 as amended. Actually, before we vote on it, just one, one final question. This may be for you, maybe for Director Nichols. So, if part of the reason why we're spending additional dollars is because we're understaffed in HR, do we have a plan to fill those? Are those, are the necessary positions posted? Are we trying to fill them?
Currently, at this time, we are trying to fill. That responsibility is led by the chief equity officer. So, we are looking to fill that in 2026. In the meantime, I'm handling all of those cases.
Okay. But 2026 being like the upcoming.
First quarter.
So, next month, we'll have this job posted and searching.
We have already started some interviewing.
Okay. Great. Now, let's vote on introductory number 457 as amended. Well, first, I need a motion to vote on it as amended.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 458, amending the municipal code with respect to towing and storage fees. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Vice President Harris.
I see that you're trying to increase the fees, and I'd like to know, how does that increase fare with other cities in this state?
It still puts us about $10 below what the county is charging. I have not done a benchmarking against Buffalo or Syracuse recently, but surely can do that.
And just as a note, Vice President, we actually, this was meant to come with the budget vote back in June, and council, council decided to hold it at the time, but nothing has changed from what was initially proposed to us. Councilmember Patterson, do you have anything you wanted to talk about on this matter?
Well, I did have an opportunity to talk to the, to a member of the community who is in the towing community. He had some, he had some extreme concerns about the rate, basically, that this rate is too low. We recorded that interview. We shared it with all council members. It's, it's there for folks to review. I'm taking it for granted that folks have had a chance to review that information. Adrian, we did send that to everyone, didn't we? Okay. So, we didn't get that information. Oh, I thought we had already shared that information. Chair, I apologize. I thought this information had already been shared. I sat down with the gentleman. We did an interview, and we recorded it. This item was originally held back in June at my request to get this information. We got the information. I thought the information was out. I don't think it's fair to council to vote on this item at this time until folks have had a chance to review that information. It's my hope that we can get that information shared ASAP to all the council members so that we could vote it up or vote it down this cycle, this month. It's up to you.
Councilmember Patterson, as a, as a matter of respect, I'm happy to hold it for you. I'll also share that I will not, I will not let the December meeting pass without this being voted on.
Absolutely.
I personally support it as it is right now.
It's fine.
Having a single, having a single operator in this industry say that the fees are not fair is not really a surprise. That's going to happen from time to time.
Absolutely.
But I'd prefer to just move it along right now. But if your preference is to hold it, let council members watch the interview.
So, in fairness, I, this is my error, and I will take the fault and the blame for this. I thought this had already been shared, and it wasn't. And so, I apologize to the full council on that point. But with that being said, you know, if, if, if this committee is comfortable moving forward, it's not for me to say no. I'm not a member of the committee. So, I mean, it is what it is, and I, and I respect your position.
Okay.
But this error is, I, the error is my error.
Hey.
And no one else's.
This is not, we're not, let's, let's not, let's not harp on that. Let me just ask my fellow members of the committee. I'm personally comfortable with moving forward with what the recommendation was from OMB. This was the same recommendation that they gave us in June. I don't see any compelling reason to not go with what they've stated. If councilmembers Monroe and Martin and President and Vice President would like to hear the interview that Councilmember Patterson recorded prior to voting, I'll hold it. I personally don't feel the need to. What do folks want to, want to do?
I prefer to hold it just to see another perspective.
Councilmember Monroe, do you have a strong opinion about this either way?
I also would like to see the information.
Great. That's majority, but Council, Vice President, you have a strong opinion?
I'd like to see the information. I was wondering if there enough time to gauge where Buffalo and Syracuse is.
Certainly, we, our, our staff can do that work. That'll be public, publicly available information.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm happy to hold it. President Melendez, I'm just going to ask that you also commit right now that this will move in December, one way or another.
Sure. I, I'm happy to hold it and, and vote on it in December.
Great. So, this is held as well. Introductory number 458 will be held in committee. Let's see. Is there more work before this committee? In fact, there is. Introductory number 459, a local law amending the city charter with respect to the salary of the mayor. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin.
So, this question is for law, for law, and it might need a bit more time. But can you point me to where I would find the enabling legislation or policy that allows the president of council to make 25% more than the rest of council?
We can get something to you in writing.
Thank you. And when you research that, could you let me know? Because I, I, I know this policy exists, and it's, it exists. So, I'd also like to know when it started, what the basis for that is, and what efforts we can maybe consider to bring the president and the council's salary closer together for equity purposes.
Heard. Sure.
I would also just say, I think the additional dollars for the additional time spent, which I'm very grateful that we have people who want to serve as president of city council. But your question is heard. Corporation Council will provide an answer. Any further questions on 459? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Introductory, oh, motion passes. Introductory number 460, a local law amending the city charter with respect to the salary of members of the city council. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I'll just make a quick comment about this for the, for the record. It has been past precedent since the great Finance Chair Carol Lee Conklin's tenure for the council finance committee chair to be the one requesting the increased pay based on essentially a 3% COLA. We went back to that precedent, which is why this is coming from, with my signature on it. But essentially, what we're asking to do is to increase the salaries of the mayor and the city council by 3% for the next four years. 3% per year. Councilmember Martin.
In, in putting forth this legislation, did you engage in conversations with other council members? Did you do any benchmarking with Buffalo, Syracuse, or any other council or legislative bodies in New York State?
No. Buffalo are full-time council members, so they're paid significantly more than we are. I think if, if there's a conversation about, is the council's salary enough money? That's probably more in line for a referendum and a conversation with the larger community. This is about 3% COLA increases. So, no, I did not do any engagement, and I, and I wouldn't think that would be appropriate for this legislation.
So, in deciding raises or not raises, or determining the salary for a body, right? You, you don't think it's appropriate to talk to the people it impacts?
I'm not determining anything. I'm following the past precedent of 12, 16, probably more years than that, of a 3% COLA increase. Determining is not the verb I would use for that.
I would.
Sure. Feel free to vote no. Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. And with that, that wraps up the work of the business finance.
Councilmember Gruber. I just have one quick question.
Oh, pardon me. President Melendez.
I just have one question for the administration to follow up on. The GBI report, if we can get an understanding of timing on when council might see the final version of that. I'm assuming that we're close or done, but would love to see where that is.
Yep. We'll get that in writing. That concludes the work of the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee.
All right. Peace and blessings, everyone. Happy holidays to all of you. I pray that you are all well, and your families are well too. Once again, it is, I'm honored and privileged to be here. And at this time, I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee to order, and I'd ask Madam Clerk, would you please call the robe?
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We, thank you. We do not have any presentations for the Public Safety Committee today, so we'll go right into the business of the Public Safety Committee. Excuse me. Introductory number 461, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement and amending the 2025-2026 budget for the 2026 Stop DWI in 2025 High Visibility Engagement Campaign Programs. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? If, oh, Council Vice President Harris.
I'd just like to make a comment that I fully support this program. In honor of supporting the program on behalf of my, my uncle who passed from a DWI incident a few years ago. These programs are very important because we need to do what we can to minimize DWI incidents in our city.
Any other questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I just want to back up for a second. I'm sure this has probably already been done. If not, I have, I want to do it because I just feel I have such a great relationship. Former Commissioner Norm Jones is in the house, and I just wanted to acknowledge my dear brother. God bless you, man. Good to see you. All right? I'm sure somebody may have said that, but forgive me if it's already been done. Now, on to introductory number 463. A resolution appointing a member of the police accountability board. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, we vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Introductory number 464, a resolution authorizing a city council liaison to the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. We're going to start with Council President. We're going to go right on, let's just go right on down the line. I'm going to start with Council President, then I'll move to my left with Council Vice President, then we'll go from left to right in that order. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, just want to say that, you know, first and foremost, the coalition has been alive and well for seven years or so. And this is an opportunity for us to continue the relationship officially as we move forward into new, new chapters and new opportunities. And this before you is an opportunity for us to continue to build the relationship with the coalition beyond Councilmember Lightfoot's tenure here as a council member. So, we are looking forward to supporting it.
Thank you. And I echo the remarks of our President. I've served on this coalition with Councilmember Lightfoot since he started, and I'm really happy and proud of what it's become and what it will become. I'm really, I could say congratulations to you on making this transition and being able to keep city council involved in the efforts of the fight against gun violence.
Yeah. So, echoing the two speakers before me, I wanted to say a huge thank you for your leadership on council in the gun violence space. I learned so much from how you move. You keep your head down, you focus on the community, and you just get work done. So, I'm really excited that this is going to continue specifically under your leadership, with your expertise, with your seriousness. So, I'm honored to support this.
All right. Councilmember Monroe.
Sure. And my question is, as far as what I see here, there isn't a commitment to any monetary pieces of the council budget?
That is correct. Currently, just FYI for some of you, and we'll make sure Council President has it, and I'll give him the permission to send it around to all of the council members. And just real briefly, a quick backdrop of how we got here. You know, of course, everyone knows that I'm retiring from politics and from the city. After 30 years of service with the city, 20 years on politics. But the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition was something that I started from the incipient, from me being here eight years ago. I tried to give it to the administration a couple of years ago under Vic Saunders, rest in peace. And they didn't really kind of like get it. You know what I'm saying? It's because, you know, it was something that I was doing. And so, when I told the coalition, which is made up of a mirror of different organizations that I was leading, they're like, well, you know, like with most organizations, when the founder or the person leaves, typically, the vision goes away too. So, that was a problem. So, he was like, we don't really want that to happen. So, is there a way where you can continue this work? Because it's great work, and I wanted to continue the work, but not under the umbrella of city council, but still be considered the work that I do. So, I talked with the mayor, and I talked with the corporate council and asked if that was, if there was a way to do that. And they agreed that there was a way to do that, and the best way to do that was a memorandum of understanding. So, we have a memorandum of understanding signed by myself and the mayor that basically allows me to take this product, this brand, with me and be able to operate it in a non-governmental space, which will be a faith-based space through my church. I'm a pastor. I have a church. I have a faith-based, separate organization, Compassion Bridge Ministries. That's just, this is out for, an announcement will be coming soon. I'm the CEO of that, and I will be doing a lot of my work through that umbrella. So, this would allow me to be able So this will allow me to be able to do that work under that umbrella. However, council president, which has been very involved in the Rock Against Gun Violence, council vice president, which has been very involved, they sent his members on this, they said, look, we've made a lot of progress together in this community around this. We have two action plans that we created for this community. All of them have been implemented for the most part. We have one gun trace data report that has been significantly helpful to this, to the police department, and we have a second gun trace data report that's being done right now. We're the only city from our size that have ever had two gun trace data reports done for our city. So all of this great work around the human service and stuff, we didn't want it to just stop. So there's a reason to have a partnership. So we wanted to continue that partnership in some form. And that's where the resolution came in that brings a commitment, not only from administration, we have a commitment from administration through the MOU, but now we have a commitment through city council to say, hey, we're committed to being a partner in this. But the beautiful thing about it is, I may be on the other side of this day, as because you talk about monetary, begging for money later. And I would not have the restraints of conflicts of interest. I've never got money from the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. I want to repeat that to this community. The Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition has never been funded outside of my member items. Member items that I receive, I put back into the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition for the community. And that's the only funding and/or possibly forfeiture funds we first received under the passive administration. We got some forfeiture funds to do billboards, ads, and things of that nature from the money seized from drug dealers and things of that nature was put back into this community through the Think About It campaign, A Shot From A Gun Can't Be Undone. But other than that, there has been no city funding outside of own dollars that were given to me to put in and the forfeiture funds that ever support this program. So that's why I'm excited about this partnership and moving forward. And to answer your question, because now, under the umbrella of the faith-based organization 501(c)(3), I will be able to now go and solicit for funds to do more work. Look how much work we did with no funds. So imagine what we could, what we'd be able to do with a little bit of resources financially. So hopefully that answered your question, and hopefully it gave some more information to the public that may be watching around the gun violence thing. A lot of people assumed that this was a city-funded program, but there's never been legislation that come across this desk to fund this program.
And so the MOU with the administration, is that something similar where they will have staff?
Yes, I will make sure that the president will share the MOU, because it's no secret, with the MOU, and I'm sure that it's okay to do that. So, yeah, and basically what it's saying is, at every one of our monthly meetings, which by the way, we have continuously had monthly meetings, open public meetings, streaming to the city council YouTube page for years. I think, I don't, I don't know, I've never seen that before from any other council member. I've never, never seen that before from any other city council member that streams consistent meetings to the public monthly for years, eight years. And so we, we, the MOU says, at each one of those meetings, we have representatives from the city that always attend these meetings. So that would be a great loss to continue to have these meetings and not have these representatives there that help move this work along. The Crisis Intervention Team came out of Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. The Homicide Response Trauma Mobile Unit came out of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. So the, the, the MOU says, we're going to stay committed to making sure that our staff is attending these meetings and supporting this work.
Thank you very much for the thorough explanation. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Any other questions, comments, or, oh, well, I just want to say, thank all my colleagues for supporting this and all over the years. I've never, oftentimes, to get nine council members to agree, the things can be very challenging and difficult. When it comes to the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition, I have never gotten a no from any of you when it comes to this work. So I want the public to understand that when it came to me, coming from the public safety background of fire department, military, those types of things, life safety is the number one priority. So when I came into this, this job of council and asked to be chair of public safety, my number one priority was how do we work to save lives? I'm not saying the coalition is the solution to every problem, but we were a part of the solution. And that was very, very, very important for me. And to bring people from all walks of life that do this work into one space to have, to collectively work on solutions has been amazing for this city. And so again, we don't, we don't take, try to take credit for anything, you know, but we realize that we are a part of the solution, and we want to continue to do that. So thank my colleagues. I'll take a, a, a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we vote all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. With no further business to come before the Public Safety Committee, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Well, at this time, I'd like to call the committee of the hold to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so this month, we have introductory number 462. A resolution confirming the appointment of the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Services. We are holding a confirmation hearing, which will begin momentarily. As a matter of course, this is the committee of the whole, so this item will be held in committee pending that hearing. And with no further business, this committee stands adjourned. All right, so now we are going to begin our scheduled confirmation hearing. I'll ask the clerk to please call the meeting to order and call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber.
Present.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So we're here today to hold a confirmation hearing for currently interim commissioners for the Department of Recreation, or excuse me, of Environmental Services. Introductory number 462 has been submitted to us for consideration, naming Kaputay Akansay as the mayor's appointee. Mayor Evans, would you like to make an opening statement?
I'll make a brief statement. And then if you see me have to leave, it's because I have to speak at the annual Beechwood First Responders Community Dinner. So I'll leave you to the folks. You'll be okay, though, if I leave a little early. Just let me say, it's an honor to nominate Kaputay Akansay to be the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Services. I will say that this is probably one of the toughest jobs and jobs in city government. Every job is tough in city government, but being the commissioner of DES is one that is extremely challenging, but I think also rewarding. It is extremely front-facing. It is the job that you don't know much about until something goes wrong. It's very rare that somebody will call you and say, thank you for picking up the trash on time, making sure that your drinking water is safe. These are all things that we just take for granted, but they are critical city functions that you don't realize or appreciate until you are either the mayor or you're the commissioner and you're seeing it every single day. So I, I got the opportunity to see Kaputay up front and personal and working hard in his previous position in budget. He has a great background in budget. A lot of people don't know that. And then he moved over from budget to be the, the assistant commissioner in the Department of Environmental Services. And I was a member of city council. He was a member of the Department of Environmental Services. And I was chair of one of the best committees on council, I think, where I had the most fun, the Parks and Public Works Committee back then. So I got a chance to see them then. But the last thing I'll say is, is that I remind people all the time that City Hall does not close down. And in this position, you have to be unflappable, you have to be willing to work, and you have to be on call 24/7. And Kaputay has been there, as has many members of our team, be it 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, on a, on a conference call, or early on a Saturday morning, dealing with an issue. It's, it's hard to magnify in words all of, all the things that this job entails and what it entails for our residents in our city. But I'll tell you three things you have to be, and I think Kaputay fits the bill, bill on all of them. Number one, you have to be able to get along with people. Because you're going to have everybody and their mother telling you how to do your job, and rightfully so. They pay their taxes, and they expect to have their trash picked up, or they want curb cuts, or they want speed bumps. And you have to be able to work with people and sometimes help get them to a yes or make them understand what is going on. So being able to work with multiple constituencies, not just the public, but also multiple constituencies within the administration, because they are also on call for all of us other departments. We call DES when something breaks, when, when something needs to be moved, when something needs to be protected, you're calling the Department of Environmental Services. So you have to be able to work with all those constituencies and deal with a lot of different personalities. And then the, the second thing is, is that you have to have a good operational mindset. Because you don't know everything. We love Kaputay, but I'm not letting him drive a plow, or I'm not letting him go fix the water main break, right? So you have to, you have to understand all of the skills that each people have in those departments, and Kaputay has that. And then lastly, you have to be able to build a good team. And the Department of Environmental Services probably has one of the best teams in the country. And I know this because I travel a lot around the country. And this team has been innovative, they have been creative, they have been effective. And over the last year, Kaputay has helped lead that. Be it our tree initiative, be it our brownfield cleanups, we just announced one of the largest brownfield cleanups in the city's history earlier today, DES was a part of that. Our nature center, DES is a part of that. All of our street maintenance programs, biggest street programs we've had in years, State Street, Genesee Street, DES is a part of that. Whenever we open up a new business and they need a street, it's DES that does that. And Kaputay, in the past year, has been a leader in that, in that area. So I look forward to him becoming the permanent commissioner, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President, to take, take your colleagues through the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Akansay, do you want to have an opening statement?
Yes, if I may. Thank you, council president. First, I want to thank the mayor, certainly for the nomination. I'm completely honored that I didn't think this, I wasn't expecting this day to come, but it has finally come, and I really thank the mayor. And I also want to thank the deputy mayor, who has really been the guy in life for me for the last year, assuming this acting role. He's been, he's been a steward really for me, and I really want to thank him for that. I also want to thank my colleagues, my brothers and sisters, who are as part of the senior management team. They've been tremendous for me for the last year in helping me assimilate into this role. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for being a steward for me. Some of you may know that I'm from Ghana, West Africa, and I came here, I'm actually from Accra, the capital city. I was born there. I, I spent my youth there. My entire family is still there. In Ghana today, my countrymen and women face significant challenges in terms of sanitation. About 25% of the population have access to basic services. Key issues include the lack of proper waste disposal points, lack of household water sources, and several inadequate funding, inadequate funding for infrastructure improvements. Every day, as I walk into City Hall, I can't help but think about that. As I get the opportunity to lead a team of men and women who are dedicated to providing those critical services to the city of Rochester, to move that city forward, clean, and safe. Excuse my, my voice, I was battling a little cold over the week, so. I began working for the city about 24 years ago. Some of you know, they know me from my days in budget. During the 15 years in budget, my primary duty was really the CIP budget. Managing that process, hundreds and hundreds of projects over the years, I learned the importance of effective planning, coordination, and then ultimately executing to deliver desirable product. Those are the same principles I've carried over with me to DES. And much the same way, DES requires an effective planning for usually some of the design, internal and external coordination with our various partners inside and outside City Hall, and then delivering services to our constituents. To the men and women of DES and the citizens of Rochester, I am more than humbled to have been given this opportunity to continue to serve you. I understand the heart of our mission because I have lived it. Having spent my entire career over here at City Hall, coming through the ranks and being promoted along the way, I understand the culture and what it takes to effectively lead this department. We all striving towards the same common goal, to provide the best customer service to the residents of the city of Rochester on a daily basis. I am deeply committed to guiding us forward with clarity, compassion, and consistency. And not just that, but to manage it through this moment, but to lead through it also. I am ready to lead, to maintain the stability of our operations, and to help shape a stronger, resilient future. I approach this responsibility with a mindset focused on minimizing disruption, preserving stability, and ensuring long-term impact for the people who rely on us most. My vision is to continue to look at every facet of our operations through an equitable lens and from an ongoing project such as the tree plant initiative to a lead pipe replacement initiative. Work must be transparent, open, and honest with the community. Finally, I'd like to end with, I'd like to recognize two people who were instrumental in helping me get to this point. The first being the late Carlos Carballo. Carlos took his time while I was, when he was here at City Hall and afterwards to, to talk to me and meet with me. Usually, we met at gyms, if you know Carlos, where I was, he's always at gyms. And he would sit with me and talk to me about the embodiment of being a good leader. From him, I learned about every, that every individual, every employee contributes is valuable contributor to the mission of the organization. Do not take anyone for granted and listen to them at all times. And it's not just those from the management level, but those from every facet of the organization. The other person, I swear to you, I wrote this about two months ago, but I had to put him here, right? The other person is Norman Jones, who happens to be here today, who was my mentor. Norman's the one that brought me over to DES. And Norman has, has a keen eye for recruiting, always looking out for, to get, to recruit people to DES. Forever talking about DES, when you, when you talk to him, he always talks about DES and the critical services we provide for the community, while emphasizing a culture of inclusion, working as a team, and relationships. It's from him I learned about the brand of DES, that being united and committed to providing the dependable, efficient services to the residents of the city of Rochester. So to you both, I thank you. And I'm happy to have you answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akansay. So first and foremost, I want to say to the mayor, about time? I think we've been waiting and waiting, ready for this moment to ask questions and, and in my opinion, confirm the incoming commissioner. So Commissioner Akansay, I'd like to start off by just saying that, in my experience working with you thus far in, in your current capacity, you know, sometimes you send a quick note and you're looking for an answer. And, you know, every once in a while, as a council member, you get accustomed to a canned answer. You don't give canned answers. You give the detail, the full detail. And I just want to say, I really appreciate that about you and your team, because I know it comes from the team as well, and the amount of effort that you've put into making sure that council members do have the information they need to make informed decisions, but also to address constituent concerns as they come up. So I want to commend you for that. The role that you are in is, yeah, it's about infrastructure, yeah, it's about, you know, all that stuff that you do every day in terms of making sure the streets are plowed and all that good stuff. But it's also about people. Can you talk to us about your experience, not just working within government, but working in neighborhoods across the city, and what values you have and approaches you have when it comes to engaging residents?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, you know, I, in my, my speech there, I just talked about DES being a brand, right? And Mr. Jones started that. I want the people of, you know, customer service is our, is our mission, right? And I want people to recognize that DES is focused on that, not just that customer service, but also has that ability to, when they think of DES, that we're delivering services to the utmost to provide to these residents, right? So I talk, you know, I grew up playing sports, so I also talk about teams, right? So I look at DES, I want, you know, performance as more of a team, right? A lot of things I do for the community in terms of my engagement, in case, meeting with residents, meeting with community neighborhood groups, I want that to implement and shown by those that are not, that I don't see on a daily basis. So from our solid waste personnel who are out there on a daily basis that, that people see each and every day, to those, those, those parks and recs folks, I want them to also be show, be show. I want them to also be show, be show, show that DES, right? Have that stature, that DES represents something to them in the community. So overall, you know, I'm talking about the brand of DES being that of a team aspect. And I'm doing that through, you know, showing that what I do in the community in terms of my leadership and those engagements I have, they're also engaging as they're communicating with those in the community. That was a little bit long with it, but I hope.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. Before I, we'll go down the line from left to right, but before I turn it over, I just want to say in your opening remarks, I could feel in the pit of your stomach that this matters to you. And I just want to say that I appreciate that about you, how humble you are, your background, and I think it will serve the city well. Councilmember Gruber?
Thank you. And yeah, let me echo that. I appreciate your opening remarks. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you interim commissioner. That's what I'm gonna call you for the, for the next couple of moments here. Appreciate your remarks, connecting it to your personal story, and connecting it to how you really feel when you walk in this building every day. It matters. I appreciate seeing so many members of your, of your leadership team here and supportive of you. Seeing Commissioner, former Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Emeritus Jones, come out of retirement to be here and support you. What you didn't say when you thanked him is, we all know that he also taught you how to pick out suits. So, little, little-known fact about Commissioner Jones. I want to ask you two, two questions, and then I'll, I'll move it along from me. And the first is, you and I have gotten to work pretty closely on, on Vision Zero, which is an initiative that, it's two words that are really meaningful. The idea is, how do we get down to zero fatalities on our streets so that everyone can get to and from where they need to go safely, regardless of what their mode of transit is? It's really meaningful to me, I know it's meaningful to Mayor Evans and the entire administration, but I want to hear from you, Commissioner. What do you, what do you hope to be able to accomplish specifically and quickly in the Vision Zero commitment?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I too, like many of you, the mayor, believe that traffic fatalities can be prevented in this, in this community. We have way too many traffic fatalities. And I think that with safe engineering, with automated enforcement, and with, you know, other, other priorities we have identified in our pillars, that we can make a difference in this community in terms of this initiative, right? There are, you know, we've just implemented the bus stop cameras. And the numbers, I've heard some preliminary numbers already, and they are appalling. They're absolutely appalling. And I think that there's an ability for this community to really rally around this initiative to reduce traffic fatalities. I think that, you know, right now, we're, are, we, you know, my predecessor start kicked this off, and we made it a significant strides this year. We had the consultant onboard that helped us identify some of the priority items that we have in our pillars that we can really focus on. We had the bus stop, the bus arm cameras, for instance, that, that's gonna help us hopefully reduce some of the, some of the fatalities that are happening. But as you, as council will see in our legislations already, right? That we've submitted, every transportation project that we have, we have identified a piece that has Vision Zero impact to it, right? So I think that we're ready, we're doing, the work is already happening. We have North Clinton, for instance, that's coming to council relatively soon. Hopefully the SS4A money comes through, and we'll be able to make more impact on our city streets. So to your question, I think that in the long term, I'm looking for, DES as a whole, if the money transpires or doesn't transpire, I think that we're gonna continue to make those improvements. We have the Complete Streets program, which identified, has identified certain improvements that we're gonna do each, every construction project for our streets. So that's gonna continue no matter what the funding comes, whether or not we identify particular funding for Vision Zero, so.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate just knowing how committed you are to that, to that initiative. My second question, let me first just echo what the mayor said. I do think that DES, I mean, every job in city hall is a difficult one. I think DES truly is a catch-all department, and I think in a lot of ways has more stuff in it in one department than there is probably anywhere else. And you all do incredible work, and the people of the city know that. But I also, I wouldn't be me if I didn't also point out places for improvement. So I want to talk about, a couple of weeks ago, we had a water main break on Meredith Street. And, you know, water main breaks happen. There's some things that are beyond our control. And I think that after a few days, we really did figure out how to best serve the people who are impacted. But I want to know from you, Commissioner, what did you learn from that experience? What would you do differently if the same thing happened again?
I appreciate you bringing that. I certainly have, first and foremost, as the commissioner, I have tremendous, I've had tremendous empathy for those folks that are impacted by that. I, you know, as a leader of the department, and, you know, we've been candid that our response was not up to standard.
Sorry, I don't mean to rain on the interim commissioner's parade, but there are active claims related to that. And so I'm just gonna, I think, ask the commissioner to kind of conclude his answer there. Happy to.
Well, I'm gonna ask my question again. He doesn't have to look backwards. My question's about forward-looking.
Okay.
What, what would you do differently if the same thing happened again, without talking about any of the existing claims or anyone on Meredith Street? That doesn't seem like an unreasonable question.
It doesn't seem like an unreasonable question, and yet talking about changes we might make could be construed as an admission. So I, I'm, I think we're happy to have this conversation with you, but I'd rather not do it in a public forum. I apologize for that.
Okay, while it goes down the line, I'm gonna think of another way to frame the question. So, challenge accepted.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly speak to that. We're out on a daily basis with our team, looking at our infrastructure. And that's a, that's a thing that, you know, our hydraulic team is certainly proactive on looking at where we can minimize impact to our agent system. So to that, that's really all I say.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Commissioner, I will say that as chair of the department, since you've taken over, I would, I've learned so much from you and your staff. You know, there hasn't been a question that you haven't answered, whether it be, you know, something that may seem really simple or something that's very difficult. You guys have done, you've done leaps and bounds in making sure our drinking water is safe. The lead replacement service line project is huge. It's a milestone that not many cities, actually, I don't believe any other city in this country is taking on so early. So we are leading the charge on that, and that's coming from the work that you and DES has been doing over the years. And that's kudos to you and your team. Not to mention the consistent oversight with the public works, plowing, all of the, all of the things that you guys do. Even something so simple as replacing a one-off sign in 19th Ward is something that you guys did, and I appreciate it. So keep up the good work, and I am glad that we were able to work together. I'm proud of you as a commissioner and your team, not just you, but your whole team. They make us proud, at least I'm proud of what you guys do for our city, because you guys do work hard.
I appreciate that. And just similar to my response to Council President, you know, one of my, quickly as I assumed the interim position, is that one of my key initiatives was make sure I was responsive, right? You're gonna, if anybody sends me a message, I, we have to respond. Whether it's to say yes or no, you have to respond. And I've told my, I told my leadership team that just that, that we are, again, customer service is our, is our mission, right? And for people to rely on us for daily services, that is important. So if you don't have the answer, at least let them know you don't have the answer, but we'll, we're gonna get back to you. And as most of you know, that, you know, we certainly, I may hit a priority within 24 hours, that we make sure that we get some response back to our constituents or to you or to those that we, that we meet with on a daily basis. And if not, you don't have the response, at least, we always do circle back. So that's, that's always been a priority of mine, and will continue to be a priority of mine, that we're always responsive to the community and to everybody that we keep us out there.
I do have one question. What is your plan on, you know, allow, providing opportunities to folks in the city and keeping the diversity in your department?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I mean, someone's gonna ask me that, and I just, if I may digress a little bit, I just want to tell you, I have, the Re-Job is no longer, we don't have, no longer have Re-Job, but we have the BEST program, right? Our Re-Job unfortunately ended. We had 194 graduates out of the Re-Job program, which is tremendous. I really applaud Paul McFadden, who really leads that initiative for us. We transitioned over to BEST, right? And out of BEST, which is even higher, because Re-Job is construction-related work, BEST is project management. But out of the Re-Job program, we, I get a kick out of this. And we hired four students out of Re-Job, who currently, we've hired more, but four currently work out of my permits department. And I get a kick out of it because they're leading my permits department and against corporations or business owners, property owners, who are looking for right-of-way permits to do their jobs. And those folks that are in my permits department, they hold them accountable for every single aspect to get their permits, right? And those are the type of success stories that I like to talk about because those are folks that we hired, we found from the community, went through a program, gave them a job, and they are so committed, committed to the work that they do. And they run things. I don't, I, you know, I talk to Holly every so often because I get an email from one of the property owners, say, hey, your permits people are, you know, they're, they're doing this, doing that. I'm like, they're doing, they know what they're doing. And they're not just, it is not satisfied with what they're doing in permits. All of them have gone out to get additional certification. There are, some of them are using our tuition assistance program to get higher education. They run things. So I'm looking for more opportunities for us to, fortunately, the federal government is still giving us some dollars for workforce development. And so I look forward to that continuing and hiring through that process. We have other means of hiring through equitable lens. You know, everything we do, I, all our, my managers look to have an equitable lens in terms of our hiring processes. So, but, you know, I really want to share that story with you guys. That is just a tremendous success story for us and for the city.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kaputé!
Yes, sir.
My guy, man, all due respect, Mr. Ocean. I, what can I say? I, I, I don't have a question or any questions, but I do have some comments. And I just want to say, first and foremost, you had some big shoes to fill.
Did.
All right? And, and with Commissioner Jones being here, who had a lot of experience in relationships, and oftentimes, relationships are non-transferable, right? And, and so to be able to walk, walk into those shoes and have to be able to, to, to meet that level of expectation takes a certain type of individual. And I would say, sir, you're that type of individual. And job well done to Mr. Jones, if he's your, obviously, if he's your mentor, then you made an excellent mentee, all right? And so I'm saying that because of the personal and experience that I've had in dealing with you, Commissioner. And, and every time that, and the mayor mentioned three points that he said that he felt that made you fit the bill for this particular position. I have three that are compassion, commitment, and the calmness. And, and that's what it takes for this particular position and job. And the compassion is the fact that, and I can't speak to what happened in the past for the main break, but I can tell you what just happened recently with a water main break that I experienced and how Mr. Kaputé, Commissioner Ocean say, handled this particular situation. And forgive me if I'm brutalizing your name. But I was planning an event with the veterans for the city at my church, which is a one-way street. It's Cumberland is a one-way street that runs across the inner loop. So there's no other way to get through this street other than from North Street coming down one way. And we've been planning this event for months. Veterans who will know many of are underserved. And we, an hour before the event, I get a call that we can't get down the street. We can't get down the street. And so everyone's saying we can't get down the street. Now this is being advertised on WDKX and all over, flyers all over. And I got all these veterans coming to, potential veterans that need help, that are coming to for this facility for assistance. So, and anybody who knows me, and most of the people that work with me know, I don't call and ask people really for stuff. You know what I'm saying? All these years, if I'm calling and asking or saying something, it's a problem. And so I, I, at that point, I called the commissioner, Mr. Kaputé, and I says, you know, there's an issue here. I don't know what it is, but I'm being told that it's a water issue. And so the guy got on the phone, he goes, you know, hey, you know, this is a seven-inch main break, and we don't know how long this situation's gonna be. And I got an event in a half hour where all these people come in. And I didn't have a problem with, with canceling. That wasn't the issue. But the issue was, these were, you know, veterans that were coming to get this assistance. Who knows what that would, you know, canceling, what we would have missed. Long story short, within, I want to say, less than 20 minutes, I was given, less than 10 minutes, I was given a call back. Less than 20 minutes, the road was reopened. The, the water main break was, was contained. And we had veterans there that received benefits potentially for the rest of their life and changed their life forever, okay? That's the type of impact, when you have compassion and when you're responsive and when you've learned from past issues, that you've made those adjustments because that adjustment was made. And I know there had to been some learned experience as well, as well as just overall of who you are and what, and what you are and what that means to this community. So in this particular position, because everybody's emergency isn't necessarily your emergency, but it is their emergency. And these little things may seem small to some people, but it's a big deal to Ms. Jones. It's a big deal to Mr. Thomas. It's, it has a major impact on our free people. So that compassion, sir, I've seen that in you, the commitment, I've seen that in you. I've never not seen your constituent concern or issue that you have not responded quickly on. And I pride myself on that as well, of trying to get back to people in a timely fashion. And you do that, and that's very important. And that was part of those big shoes that you have to fill. And, and then the calmness is extremely important, too. Because when these emergency situations are happening, oftentimes, everybody's panicking. And everybody, you know, and somebody's gotta be in the room, that's the voice in the room, to be calm and say, you know what, let's figure it out. And we can figure it out. And you have all of those characteristics. And it is my honor and privilege to be, one of the last things I had to do is to support your confirmation, sir, because it is a great support of confirmation of someone who embodies all of those things and who I think would be great. And not only, just like what was done to you, somebody looked down and lifted you up to put you in the, I can see you doing the same thing with somebody else. So I appreciate this opportunity, Mr. President, for, thank you for being able to say my comments. I reserve any questions for my colleagues, and I will be honored to support this confirmation.
I appreciate that. I really do appreciate that, those words. I'll just say real quickly that there's a certain temperament that you need for this position. I learned that very quickly. You know, I've had a great mentor, again, like I said, like with the deputy mayor that has really, you know, I started off, and, you know, I've been able to steady myself in that sort of way. You know, really, what it gets to is, you have to be kind, right? And that's what I learned about, it's just about being kind. Again, we're a customer service-focused department. People rely on our services. Kindness goes a long way. So that's something I learned along, Commissioner Jones shared that with me a long time ago. It's all about relationships. And so having been fortunate enough to come through city hall and making, making those relationships with certain folks, not just in city hall, outside of city hall, it's all about kindness. So I really do appreciate those words, and that's something I will continue to emphasize for myself and for my team. And I hope that, I appreciate that you were able to see that.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Congratulations in advance. I'm really looking forward to supporting you. I just have a few questions. Can you point to an area that you've had difficulty with in your role so far and how you've used innovation or thinking outside the box to address the issue, prioritize, what you've mentioned is important to you, customer service, any area that comes to mind?
Um, I, let's see. There's not one particular area. I am very hard on myself. I am, I, I, you know, yeah, my family's not here. I'm, I, in my blood, I'm a worker, so I'm always working. So I, 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 I'm very hard on myself in terms of, I have high expectations for myself. So that really, I, I've, you know, the last year of managing, I have a high expectation on my employees too, right? I don't expect them to work as much as, as I do, but what I do expect is effort. If you don't have, if you don't show effort, then you and I are gonna have an issue because at least, you know, people rely on us. And I, and one thing I, I always appreciate of, I, I learned these things as I, I communicate with people. The chief, Chief of Police always says, one team, one dream. I cannot, I cannot function without, also, I cannot function without some of my teammates, senior management team. We all have to function, we, there's, we, we're interacting each and every day. So, you know, I'm going around saying, sort of a long-winded response, but I, just the fact that I am, I'm not hard on people, but I just expect to do what I do in terms of, you know, the work that, you know, the commitment to the job that I put in, right? So maybe, hopefully that answers.
Yeah. That's helpful, that's helpful. And we've, we've heard about some issues within DES, working conditions, concerns of workers. I think being who you are, your background, there are going to be, be people looking up to you and looking to you to make their work experiences better. Understanding the weight of that, how do you plan to address some of the issues with culture and, and better the work environment?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So this, this year has been, is certainly having stepped in this role. I, I would tell you that one of the things I've not done enough of is, and what I really want to do, I, again, I have an assistant commissioner. Just recently, two months ago, I hired an assistant, admin assistant finally, so, but I was going full speed when I first assumed the role. One thing I want to do and I need to do is be the, be the face of the department. I need to get out and see my people. I need to be out there, see my solid waste folks out in the, out in the community. I need to be, we have public meetings, I, I wanna be out at the public meetings more often. Right? I, I just wanna be able to be out there in the field. Deputy Mayor's given some tools where, you know, you have to put some time in your schedule just so that you can go and, and see your folks out doing the work that they do. Right before here, I got here, I got an email from a constituent who just told me about the work at Solid Waste, one of our Solid Waste employees did a fabulous job on their street. I want, I, I, when I got my assistant, one of the first things I asked her to do is look up a, a award shot, because I wanna send medallions to people to recognize the work that they do. So this first year has been a learning experience that, you know, I'm trying to keep up. I've learned a lot. I've taken this year to really understand our operations. I have plans, things I, I want to strategize and change along the way I haven't had a chance to implement it yet. But really, I'm a, I came up, you know, through the ranks working and I wanna be able to see my, I wanna appreciate those that are out in the field doing the work. So it's really my commitment to, once I get an assistant in place, that I can not be in the office and, and going from nine, going from eight to six, meeting all day in the office. I need to be out there to show them that my appreciation and, you know, I wanna jump in the truck and drive with them and see what, what they're doing on a daily basis. So they can see that the commissioner is committed to them. I like going to Hamlock to see the folks down there that are providing the water service to our community. So hopefully through time, I'll, I'll find the time, ability to delegate a little bit more, but that's really my, you know, my grandfather's working. So I wanna see my folks out in the field.
Thank you so much. And for, for me, I think the most important thing is the health, safety, joy of workers. And it sounds like that's also a priority for you. So I'm really excited to see how you pour into them, develop and make sure everyone's happy and feels really valued and appreciated.
We just, we just hired a new safety coordinator for the department and she, she's new, she's not from Rochester, but she actually came from Alaska. But he's very committed and I'm looking forward to implementing some, you know, safety initiatives for our, our crews. That's, that's foremost for us, you know? Everybody's out there on a daily basis, this weather, you know? I wanna make sure that they're safe in what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe?
Good evening, interim commissioner. So I was wondering, since you've been with the city for so long, which is, which is excellent, having that historical knowledge. And so since you've been with the cities for so long and had the opportunity to be the assistant commissioner, could you share an aspect of being commissioner that you were really looking forward to getting your hands on or any piece of being the commissioner that is, is different from the assistantship that maybe you weren't expecting?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. One of my managers, who's been here forty-something years, you guys can just imagine who that is, she, she, I used to work in operations when I first came to DES and she always tells me, you, you don't know it till you're in it, right? So even under, coming under my predecessors, I wasn't aware of the day-to-day that they were involved in. So you really assume, you know, I'm assistant, I'm assistant commissioner in DES, the way it's structured is really administrative. You're, you're, I'm in charge, you're in charge of personnel, budget, security, and then there's other special projects you work on. You assume the commissioner position is a whole different world. It really is. And my colleagues can probably attest to what they do on a daily basis. But again, yeah, and so you're in it, you, you just don't realize the difference. And it's funny, I remember Councilman Patterson saying one time at one of my council meetings, you know, I put together the CIP and for years, it takes time, right? It takes time. We, we have ideas, we have projects, but, you know, with city, government, any other government, and it takes time to make things come to fruition. So patience is something I've really, you know, learned to practice myself and I, I certainly implore to others that I meet with, right? That we hear you. I would try to do as much as I can initially, but eventually we'll get, we'll, it'll get done. But, you know, but it would, it would take us a little bit of time. So again, just, it's, 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 I'll just say that it's not more than I can't handle. It's just, it's just gonna take me a little time to keep getting my footing. Hopefully I'll see the path.
And I'm sure you're looking forward to being able to fill your old position of assistant commissioner so that you have that kind of backup and support. I've known you for a long time, having worked at the city and have always enjoyed, enjoyed working with you and the level of knowledge that you bring and that level of work commitment. It sounds to me, and certainly you can respond, that especially with your experience, that succession planning, I would imagine, as well as, you know, starting to build up people for leadership going forward. That seems to me that that's something that is near to your heart?
A thousand percent. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I'm a product of succession training. I had the opportunity, somebody saw me, Commissioner Jones, and had the fortitude to look out for me and bring me to DES and give me an opportunity. Obviously now I have the opportunity. I am looking to, you know, we're, I'm losing quite a bit of staff and, you know, as I said, this year has really been steering the ship as I'm, I'm losing staff on a, you know, monthly basis that we wanna try to recruit them, right? I was certainly working with our HR department to recruit young, talented, or, you know, folks that are committed to helping DES move forward. So succession planning is, of course, is very, even for my assistant position, I want that person to, you know, I won't be here forever. I want that person to aspire to be the next, you know, DES commissioner. So, and I think I, I say the same to my senior leadership team for DES, that we need to make sure that we're providing that opportunity for others to step up into your roles once you're not part of the city or have moved on to green pastures. So that is very, again, the, the story about my permits folks, you know, they are young, talented, hungry, and they run things, right? And those are the type of folk, and people I wanted to bring to DES that they have the energy to not just, you know, serve the city, but for them, for themselves to aspire to be. And they, they're going to school and further in their education. There's nothing more you can ask for that. And that's, I'm a apology of, if I was, who was a professor, right? So education and furthering itself was always stretched through my house. So I'm looking for the opportunity to have, to share what I know to somebody else in DES, somebody else in DES that is coming through the ranks, just like I, just like I did. And hopefully I can provide that opportunity. Coming to DES will provide you that opportunity. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, and I'll yield to Councilmember Patterson.
Councilmember Patterson?
Okay, before I get into the whole praise fest like everybody else, can you give us five minutes on stop-arm cameras and what you're seeing in general? Because you were saying it was horrendous.
I'll give you thirty, can I give you thirty seconds?
Well...
And ever, I've only heard this...
Just, what you're saying?
I've only heard this antidullingly, so...
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. And the numbers are not, the numbers are not good. And I, I, and because I'm on camera and I don't wanna say what I've heard in terms of the numbers, but, you know, this is, vision zero. We have a great team and this is something that we're certainly going to be, this is gonna be impactful. It's certainly gonna be impactful. The numbers that we received so far show that there is a greater need for education on traffic fatalities in this community. So I would just, I don't wanna say beyond...
Well, well, let me make it easy for you. I asked specifically about stop-arm cameras on the school buses. You're telling me that they ain't stopping? Is that what you're saying?
I am, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So you're saying even with the camp, cameras, lights, warning period, pardon my language, to hell with that school bus, I'm still going by it? You're telling me that's what we're seeing?
Unfortunately, that's what we're seeing.
Okay. So we got that out the way. And at some point in time, we will start ticketing, those tickets will start going out?
That's correct.
So is that, what is that, next month?
Next month, yes, sir.
Okay. So next month, ladies and gentlemen out there who's running by our school buses with our babies on it, we gonna get you. We already know who you are, we gonna get you. Okay. So we got that out the way. Hey, Norm, good work, bruh. Had to say that for a reason. Prior to being a city councilman, I spent almost twenty-five years working on Norm Jones, working with Norm Jones, identifying young folks and bringing them into DES. And some of those kids that we brought in straight out of high school are in management in your department right now. Ladies and gentlemen, for you folks in the community who don't know, government service is an incredible opportunity, not just to take care of your family, but to take care of your community. And since you are a beneficiary of this system, I don't doubt for a moment that you will not go out there and reach out there and find these young folks, to bring them in. Yesterday I asked you about the CDL program. It's my hope that we can get back together and go out there and get those dollars to get those folks trained. So that's the closest thing I'm gonna say to anything negative. So now back to the praise fest like everybody else. Look, as a district council member, there, there are pretty much two seasons in my life. There's snow and trash, because that's when I call you. I call you about snow and I call you about trash. Pretty much I don't call you, I call Karen, but that's all right. I know.
Supposed to.
But it, but the, and for your district council members, if you ain't got those numbers, you need to get those numbers. I just wanna say, as part of that continuation of the success that we saw under Commissioner Jones, that you have continued, your department is incredibly responsive to those phone calls and has continued to be incredibly responsive to those phone calls. You know, when we have a problem with trash pickup, yeah, they call 311, but sooner or later they get around to calling me. And that's when I call y'all and y'all handle the problem routinely and regularly. That has been a consistent point of DES, that customer service element of it. But I just wanna thank you for that and I have no doubt that y'all will continue that. And I wholeheartedly look forward to voting for you on Tuesday, that, well, not, a couple Tuesdays from now, when we vote for you to make you the permanent, the full commissioner of DES. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm assuming council members may have more questions. I'm not gonna give them the opportunity today. So if there is additional questions, they can submit them to you in writing. I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, interim Commissioner Oconse, for your time today. This concludes our confirmation hearing for the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Services. The legislation will be considered at our next council meeting on Tuesday, December 16th at 6:00 PM here in chambers. Mr. Oconse, thank you again for your answers and for your commitment to public service.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
With no further business, we stand adjourned.